Okay.
I think I'm just gonna with this one that's recorded. Mike is gonna have to come figure that out.
She was uh, sure.
Good evening. I'd like to call the October nineteen twenty twenty-two meeting of the University Heights City Council of Order. Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Sacks here, Mrs. Blankbeld here, Mr. Rock, Mrs. Wise here, Mr. Cool, Mr. Cooney.
Here.
Mr. King.
Here. Is there a motion to excuse Mr. Rock and Mr. Cool?
So.
A motion by Mrs. Blankbeld, second by Mrs. Sacks. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Sacks, hi, this is Why don't I? This is Wise, hi. Mr. Cooney.
Hi.
Mr. King.
Very good, Mr. Rock and Mr. Cool are excused. Will you please join me in the side of the logical reasons?
I find the wages. We have states forever. One day. Our ground is difficult. The government can't.
Next item is the reading and disposal of the journal. We have a set of minutes from October third twenty twenty-two, our last regular city council meeting. Is there a motion? So the motion to approve by Mrs. Wise, is there a second? Oh, second, second by Mr. Cooney, any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Sacks, I'm staying. Mrs. Blankbeld, hi. Mrs. Wise, hi. Mr. Cooney.
Hi.
Mr. King.
Hi, very good motion carries. Uh, next is item four additions and removals from the agenda and referrals to committee. Are there any motions? If there are none, we will move on. Next item is comments from the audience. Stakers are limited in five minutes. Uh, if you care to address the city this evening, please go on the podium, state your name and address for the record. It's speaker Mike, um, and he may take up to five minutes. Is there anyone here who would care to address the city this evening? Seeing none, uh, we will turn to the reports and communications from the mayor and the taking of action thereon. Since our last meeting, Walter J. Stinson, age ninety-four, has served the City of University Heights for more than four decades as its community coordinator and then senior services manager died on October seventh twenty twenty-two. He has survived by Sarah, his wife, forty-seven years, their son Paul, and two grandchildren. Walter Stinson was a good man and a great man. He loved this community and he served this community like no other. He is an inspiration and example for us all. Walter was a native of Brooklyn, New York, who moved to University Heights in nineteen seventy-three after serving as a missionary and actor. Nineteen ninety-six, excuse me, nineteen seventy-six, Mayor Irving Honigberg hired him to become the city's first community coordinator, where he promoted fair housing opportunities, welcomed new homeowners, encouraged neighborhood activities, and planned senior citizen programs. Stinson handled the city's communications and became known as the voice of the city as host of the city's cable television program, University Heights. Good day. Stinson served in this capacity for more than thirty-four years, serving under Mayor Earl Rothschild and Mayor Susan Ingham. He retired in twenty-ten at the age of eighty-two and was then rehired on a part-time basis as the city's senior services manager, serving that capacity for another ten years, including two years in my administration. Walter was the only city employee to serve four mayors from Honigberg to Rothschild to Ingham to Grant. By joint proclamation and resolution of Mayor Brennan and and city council in twenty-nineteen, the community park at Fenwick and Saybrook Roads was rededicated as Walter Stinson Community Park, AKA The Wall. Stinson was ninety-two years old when he retired from the City of University Heights for a second time in twenty-twenty at the onset of the pandemic, when in-person gatherings, especially those for seniors, were not possible. In his honor and after consultation with the governor's office, I issued a proclamation on October tenth ordering that the flag of the United States be flown at half-staff at University of United City Hall and at all public buildings and grounds within the city until sunset on the day of his term. The, the community gathered to pay their respects and mass Christian burial at Church of Jesu, and he was interred at Lakeview Cemetery on October fourteenth in the Garden of Grace section. To many, Walter Stinson was the base of the city like no other. For decades on behalf of the city, he visited every new homeowner, myself included. Everyone knew him. We all celebrate the service and love of community in the park we renamed in his honor in twenty-nineteen. We will all miss him. Last Friday was been a storied day during the City of Beautiful Homes, University Heights. We broke ground on thirty-four beautiful homes in our city with groundbreaking of South Taylor Place, our first new housing development in the city since nineteen seventy. This would not have happened without the strong and persistent work of so many. Economic Development Director Susan Dropper, former Housing Community Development Director Patrick Robin Myers, City Engineer Joe Chuni, Law Director Luke McHunton, past and present city building officials, housing officials, police and fire officials, past and present members of city council. I want to specifically acknowledge two council members, who were present at the groundbreaking, Barbara Blankbeld and Brian King. Special mention, thanks for the Cleveland Heights University School Board, Dan Heinz, Molly Lewis, Jim Hodge, Joey Serini, Beverly Wright, together with Superintendent Elizabeth Kirby, Secretary Scott Gainer. The land was assembled and this project is happening because school officials, city officials came together to share a common vision for what will be. I thank Bo Canez and his team for sharing in our vision as well. I thank the residents for our city for putting us all in place to do this work on behalf of the community. The project is a monument to what is possible when we all work together. Benjamin Franklin once said, "Without continual growth and progress," such words as improvement, achievement, and success have no meaning. And as many have said, we favor progress even when we disfavor or are uncomfortable with change. This progress has been a long time coming. It has been processed, began in twenty-eighteen, my first year in office as mayor. This administration began the process of creating this project, creating the situation, creating the structures through which this project was known as impossible, but would one day happen, and that day arrived this past Friday. In anticipation of groundbreaking this project, Inez has built infill houses on North Tullaw, Ramon, and South Green Roads. Others too have built out new homes around University Heights since twenty-eighteen, encouraged by our example and encouraged by the community reinvestment area our city implemented in my first year in office. To someone who might come along here now and see what we are all doing, this might seem like an overnight success, but like most overnight successes, this has been years in the making. In some ways it is the beginning, and in other ways it is a continuation of projects our city leaders have in pipeline with more to come. The new street in the middle of this development will be Mosaic Court, symbol of our city's regranding, embracing and celebrating our diversity, all of us coming together in harmony to make up the community we call University Heights. And beyond simple listen, this project is a concrete achievement of our city's ongoing commitment to the success and improvement of Cedar Taylor District, our shared district of the city of Cleveland Heights, and our commitment to the diversification of our houses. With this project, University Heights will offer a modern living to the highest dress within view of downtown Cleveland and just up the hill from University Circle, the scientific, medical, and cultural of our Eastern Ohio. Knowing that projects like these are truly years in the making, I was also pleased to announce at the groundbreaking that the City of University Heights received word from NOAA just today before that it is recommending funding of a TIC project for both of our cities, for Cleveland Heights and for University Heights, a multi-purpose trail to connect our cities, to connect our communities, to connect our parks along Washington Boulevard. It is scheduled for funding in fiscal year twenty twenty-six, and though that may seem like a long ways away, it is no longer than the time it took to conceive initially of the South Taylor Place project during last week's groundbreaking. While we celebrate this milestone, much of the real work, certainly the visible work, still lies ahead. The actual instruction is part of the ongoing process moving the city forward. What a great city we have, what great residents we have to have supported us to create this project. Moving along. The ITRP has been issued. We did extend the timeline and account for the travel schedule of our tech advisory co-chair, Jay Mon. To ensure that he can be present in person for the interviews we do at the bidders. Well, RFP is on the city's website. We had our kickoff meeting with Power and Clean Future Ohio, where we identified priorities of measuring our current carbon footprint to other legislation on solar panels and EV readiness. Solar panel legislation is a particular priority due to federal tax credits that our residents may want to take to pay. I turned down the budget. Council is aware of all the work that we've been doing these last few weeks. Items described in the last few minutes in this report, items discussed in exact succession. So with all that, the administration is finalizing its proposed budget, and it will be releasing this coming Monday, October twenty-four. In preview, the draft budget is a balanced budget. Twenty-twenty-three projected expenses are in balance with twenty-twenty-three projected revenues. What may prove to be most notable about the administration's budget is what is not in it. At the last city council meeting on October third, during the Finance Committee Board, Finance Chair Michelle Muntz announced that no dollar must be considered in the budget regarding any type of change to collection solid waste until again those three D service need to be committed to the debate there rather than during the budget process. So accordingly, the administration's proposed budget does not include any capital expenditures for any new equipment related to solid waste collection, be it rubbish recycling or your employees. The twenty-twenty-three budget will be the fourth budget since our city received draft recommendations on collection modernization twenty nineteen from our consultants at GT Environmental. The longstanding recommendations by GT Environmental regarding collection modernization remain unfunded and therefore unimplemented. Last year by council resolution, the council announced that no changes would be considered then on the grounds that no survey had been completed as of this time last year. Since then, not one but two surveys have been completed. We now have revised cost figures from RRS that the City of University Heights currently spends twenty-five dollars forty-nine cents per house per month on solid waste data. This is out of twenty-three dollars seventy-four cents per house per month in the GT Environmental study, which used twenty-eighteen figures. Also since that time, Cleveland Heights completed implementation of their collection modernization and has taken advantage of an improved recycling market. With their new contract of waste management, Cleveland Heights is now being paid for their recyclables and can now recycle polycropleene plastic, that would be butter tubs, yogurt cups, sour cream containers, et cetera. Depending on how clean their recyclables are, Waste Management will pay Cleveland Heights nine dollars and forty-four cents a ton to as much as twenty-nine dollars forty-four cents a ton for their recyclables. This is not only a vast improvement over paying to have recyclables processed as Cleveland Heights was doing and as the university arts will continue to do, but it encourages recycling because these items are now too valuable to just put in a landfill at forty-plus dollars. In contrast, our city has not yet modernized, and in fact, the first of this month is now paying one hundred and one dollars eighty-five cents a ton to process our residents' recyclables. In contrast to the nine forty-four, the twenty-nine forty-four Cleveland Heights will be paid. Our city residents must continue to throw away butter tubs, yogurt cups, sour cream containers, so on, while Cleveland Heights city residents may recycle theirs. How do we get this for University Heights? Well, Waste Management's bid offers no option for processing, recycling, and blue plastic bags. University Heights wants to piggyback off this bid. We will have to end using blue bags and offer our recyclable fluids. To do that, the most efficient, cost-effective, environmentally friendly, and safest way for our city service employees is to convert to curbside automated pickup, as Cleveland Heights did earlier this year. I also note that the City of Shaker Heights has taken advantage of the Waste Management contract as well, and as many do know, Shaker Heights maintains a side door backyard pickup with solid waste, including loose recyclables placed outside uncovered in five-gallon buckets. These are placed in the buggy with a split rear rocker, one side for trash, one for recyclables. Those buggies empty into a sixty-forty split body rear load packer truck. The truck then transports the contents to the city's transfer station where everything is unloaded, and at the transfer station, recyclables are pre-sorted and contamination removed. If it is wet out and recyclables are wet, they can be left there to drown before being reloaded into another truck and driven into the water for processing. I mention all this because I know there is some talk about whether our city could simply adopt Shaker's methods. In order to replicate Shaker's methods, we would need not only all new equipment, we would need a transfer station for our pre-sorting and to store recyclables and rubbish so they are ready for transport. The City of University Heights does not have a transfer station. I know how very much recycling is important to our residents. I know many are frustrated by the limitations of our current system, even among those who otherwise like it. That's why our administration is committed and constantly engaged on this issue. It is important to you, it is important to us. University Heights can have better recycling too, and to do this, we need to make some changes. I thank the council leadership on their word that city council will take this up after the budget is passed. We can then amend the twenty-twenty-three budget to appropriate funds for implementation, and understanding that council is committed to improving recycling, I trust on behalf of our residents the eighty-four percent survey to say recycling is important to them, that we don't wait another year to begin the modernization. And we will have to make changes soon. Mr. Pari will be reporting later this evening on the state of the current fleet garbage trucks. There are consequences for the delay in making the recommended changes, and in the meantime, our work must continue uninterrupted. Thank you, this concludes my report. Next is reports and communications from the city council on the taking of action thereon. Mrs. Wise.
Thank you, that is our report.
Good thing, very good thing. Are there any other reports from council members at this juncture? Seeing none, uh, we will now go to the main portion of the agenda, Iron Eight, Letter A. A motion to approve Planning Commission's recommendation of approval from October sixth twenty twenty-two regarding application from October sixth twenty twenty-two, brought down on eighteen of twenty-five thirty-one Lafayette Drive and set plan for new house still on setting law. I understand the how it gets it is present. You are allowed on the podium, state your name and address for record, and you may have a floor. Could you make some little? Is that on?
Oh, yes. Chris Bungie, General Manager for Grease Homes.
I'm the young man Schwartz, property owner, twenty-five thirty-one Lafayette Drive.
So Dreese Holmes is, um, planning to raise the existing structure on twenty-five thirty-one Lafayette, um, and, uh, like the mayor stated, rebuild in that same location, basically in the same footprint of the existing structure, same setback from the road, same side yard variance, it's actually the home, new home that we're building is actually approximately one foot narrower than the existing structure. Um, maybe you have, um, approval through the planning commission and the board of zoning appeals for, um, the twenty-five percent footprint of the property, so, um, do you have anything else to add?
Well, we've been living in the community since two thousand and nine, pretty moving to raise our children, and we look forward to staying here for many years to come, so thank you for your consideration.
So thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Uh, yeah, just to, just to clarify, I think that last point you made, um, the, um, the mystery degrees wasn't, sorry. Chris Bungie, Chris Bungie. Uh, yes, though I understand the board of zoning appeals did, uh, to grant the variance a lock up. That was one of the conditions, uh, in the planning commission decision that the council has reported. That obviously was created for this morning's meeting, so just to supplement that the ECA did approve that, that variance. I also understand that Mr. Chuni has approved the plans, signed it up instead as well, and, um, we have, does anybody have any questions at the end? I didn't, what's, is your overall height in the house? They're four years, should we have that drawn in there? Um, it's probably approximately, I don't have the actual scale drawings, I mean, right now, but nine foot first floor, eight foot second floor, um, seventeen plus about two feet of grade exposed.
Thirty-six feet?
No, two to be nine plus eight.
Seventeen.
Seventeen plus. And then about right about another nine foot trust base. So nine, nine, eight, eighteen.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six and then two feet exposed, right, twenty-eight feet. Right, and by, with the package that was supplied, I don't see a drive, right? There should be a driver located on the tow boat. Yeah, we have a proposed concrete driveway. It runs approximately twenty-five feet.
Okay, that's good.
And the driveway is approximately sixteen feet wide.
And what is the width of the garage opening?
But the garage opening is going to be that sixteen feet as well. Standards are around here. I have our setback, I'll speed in from our. Approximately thirty-four feet, um, off the back side of the sidewalk there in the property, kind of located same as the existing structure on the property in there.
It's all kind of basically the same footprint.
Correct, yeah, it's a little, little more spread off, the total started to be.
No, I remember seeing them.
Yeah, the, I think it's existing structure, but basically the same footprint, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I had to go through ECA to be spread condition, right? Thank you.
Thank you, any other question?
Well, I just, I was at the land in MZA, and I know that one of the standing members mentioned that this was one of the most complete packets that they've ever seen, so I appreciate that, and that's, um, that's a great project, it's good for the city, and thank you.
Yes, I do. So I would also, I think I mentioned the planning commission meetings as well. We appreciate having a resident who has lived here, who is interested in staying in the community, interested in reinvesting, rebuilding the home they want here and staying in University Heights, so, so that is always a testament to, well, our community that, that you would choose to stay and invest here and continue to make this your home, so thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Form a motion.
Yeah, but motion to approve, this is point, I'll take a second. Second. I'll take a second, Mrs. Smith. Thank you. Uh, this is Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Sacks, hi, this is Blankbeld, hi, this is Wise, and Mr. Cooney.
Hi.
Mr. King.
Hi. Motion carries, thank you. Before you go, uh, the law department has prepared a development agreement. Uh, it is, um, I have, it's up, all I have to do is to review, and once we've done that, uh, Chicago will be sent.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, uh, next is item B, Resolution twenty-two, six, and seven. Miss Sacks declaring the intent to appropriate acquire that brings some interest in certain real property title in Yeshiva that of the night in Israel, known as twenty-three oh eight Warrensville Center Road, bearing permanent parcel number seventy-two dash one seven dash zero five zero, City of University Heights, County of Ohio, State of Ohio, as more would describe it, and the purpose of expansion and construction of the city campus, declaring an emergency, this is on emergency. Mr. Chicago, would I take a second?
Uh, yes, this is the, um, statutory, um, resolution that's required as the initial step in um, in that domain, proceed to take property. Um, the city is proposing to take the property known as Yavi at two-three oh eight Warrensville. Um, in connection with this, um, resolution, uh, there's a tandem notice of intent to acquire. It's also a statutory requirement that's been provided to the mayor along with the appraisal that we previously obtained, um, so that the appropriate notice can be provided to the owner of the property. Um, in the event that you adopt this resolution, you'll be coming back two in a month or so for, or with an ordinance to authorize the taking, and, um, if we're not able to, um, work out a deal with the homeowner, or I'm sorry, with the property owner, right, then we'll go ahead and file a, a lawsuit.
Thank you. Uh, I know that the, uh, council resolution is either a approval or ratification, the letter, the letter has not yet been sent to the holidays that just concluded, I do not want to send a letter and have it clock begin running, uh, during the hall, the period of the holidays. So this is ready to go tomorrow. This is it.
Thank you. I'm not sure if I need to recuse myself.
You.
I don't know if you recall. Um, who's the owner? Is it an entity?
The owner is an entity, yes. Um, yeah. I'm sure I'm going to butcher this pronunciation. I apologize for that. It's Yeshiva, the night Israel.
Good enough.
Uh, that's the owner.
Yes, okay. Okay, so if I was related to anyone affiliated with that, does that matter? I just wanted to do the.
Most, most commonly, if you're a blood relation, then yes, it does matter. Most commonly conflicts of interest relate to an economic interest. If you're in, in any way receiving remuneration or other economic benefit from that entity, you would be required to recuse yourself with a conflict, but otherwise, merely knowing someone, being common with someone, having a relationship that's, that's not romantic or blood related. It is not a conflict.
Marriage. Marriage.
That could be a conflict.
Okay.
So.
I was in a previous.
Previous.
Correct. Okay, so I'm okay to.
I think you're okay.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your, I appreciate your candor. I appreciate your candor, you know, just the council members and John, I don't want to belabor the point, but if you ever had a question about it, you should bring it up on the floor. We'll work through it like we just did. The fact that I provide you with new advice will give you cover in case anyone questions it, but I do not see a conflict of interest.
Appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? And if not, this, this would be a motion on emergency. So there would be two votes. And there's, you know, five of us present still, or five members of council present still, so it will require all. Is there a motion?
Motion on emergency.
Okay, a motion on emergency by Mrs. Weiss is her second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hardaway, discussion on motion. Very good, Mrs. Thomas, so we'll take two votes versus on a suspension of votes.
Mrs. Sacks, hi, Mrs. Whitefield, hi, Mrs. Wise, hi, Mr. Cody.
Hi.
Mr. Kane.
Hi, very good. Another main motion.
Mrs. Sacks, hi, Mrs. Whitefield, hi, Mrs. Wise, hi, Mr. Cody.
Hi.
Mr. Kane.
Hi.
Very good. Motion carriers. Next is item C, ordinance twenty twenty two dash sixty A, authorize the mayor to enter into a Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District member. Unity of infrastructure grant agreement for the East Scott Burrow and Canterbury Relief Sewer Project LLC and declaring an emergency. This is on emergency, Mr. Chiny. You have the force.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Last week, the Northeast Ohio Regional Store District, N R S D, informed us that we are successful in our grant application, the project of East Scarborough, Canterbury, Relief Sewer. At the intersection of East Scarborough and Canterbury, there is a sanitary sewer overflow, S S O. It's located in a manhole during significant rain events. It allows sanitary sewer water to enter into the storm sewer system. And eventually ends up in the environment, lakes, rivers, streams. The sewer district, the EPA know about this overflow. It's inherent in our system. It was built in nineteen fourteen or something like that. If that was ever plugged, we would have significant basement flooding events on East Scarborough and Canterbury affecting both Cleveland and St. Andrews. This project will close up that SSO, construct a relief sewer from that manhole down Canterbury to the intersection, Canterbury and Meadowbrook. At that intersection is a deep tunnel shaft part of the unit community relief sewer that the sewer district has built, probably is ten, fifteen years old now. It has enough capacity to take this flow. We had to get that approved by them. So they offered us a grant, fifty percent grant with the total cost of eighty six thousand nine hundred fifty one dollars and sixty seven cents. It's fifty percent of the project paid by University Heights and the other half paid by the sewer district as part of this grant. Just, yes, they're, if they're, yeah, on Monday, I heard from the sewer district, because I asked them if we could use some of our community cost share dollars for our share of the project. And they came back with affirmative. We are able to use, they have a ton of money for us. As you know, everybody has the store water fee on their wastewater bills now from the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. Seventy five percent of those fees, the sewer district keeps for regional projects, twenty five percent come back to the city. We have enough capacity, we have enough balance in our account to cover our share of this project. So that will be another agreement I'll have to bring back to you as soon as I get the paperwork. Might be another meeting, but anyway, good news is we can pay for this project without any of our budget. And I recommend we accept this grant and then I'll be back with your, with the approval of the caution as well. This project, we couldn't do it over the winter anyway, we would get the design order over the winter and then you know that the next break.
Thank you, Mr. Chiny. I want to thank you for your strong work on this. This is something where we, we know, we have known for some time, it's been a problem. Sewer district just wants us to do something about it. Here we have a solution to fix this. It's going to be, we're getting outside money to pay for, to pay for it from a couple of different sources and you're able to secure that. And, and, you know, and this could be a benefit for the residents of, of street, both University Heights and Cleveland Heights residents, which turns out because of its proximity, it's going to result in water. Ultimately, you know, they're going into Lake Erie, you know, from our community. It's just a win-win-win all around. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I forgot to mention, they, they know about this. They have been S S U study of our resources from, of course, probably a couple of years old now. This is one of their priority projects that wanted to get done. Which is why we applied for it. It's probably their priority unless we're going to help us out with some grant. You know, it is a normal overflow. We have to report on it yearly and the EPA knows about it and they know that we're trying to come up with a solution. Oh, yeah.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chiny. Any questions for Mr. Chiny? And if not, is there a motion to adopt?
Yes, Mr. King, so I know that we were looking at using some of these shared funds for the intersection of Washington. Still speaking, say a little bit, would, would we still have the bonds available in that pot if we use these?
Yes, interesting. We have a balance of like two hundred and twenty six thousand dollars in our account right now. That, that is over and above the funds that were already for Washington, so the state of the intersection.
Thank you. And Mr. Kane, that was also my first question when I heard this is going to be posted. Share your concern and is glad you can do both. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, this is my.
Uh, Mr. Chiny, is there also any funds that can, we, we promised residents in the St. Brook and Meadowbrook neighborhoods that have got horrible basement flooding when we did a substantial rain, they had eighteen inches of sewage in their basement repeated. And I know that at one point they were promised that this could easily that work would be done to remediate that, but that hasn't happened yet. Is there any funds there that can be put toward remedy in this problem?
It has to be stormwater funds for the community cost sharing dollars. It's kind of a gray area, whether it's sanitary or storm because of the happens during the storm. The answer is yes. But we, I think we would have another meeting with that.
We did have meetings with those residents and as I recall, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the last of those meetings occurred during the pandemic, I assume.
Correct.
And one of the outcomes was that there was really no consensus among, amongst the homeowners themselves about level of spending and what kind of repair they or sort of what, what kind of repair they prefer.
One of the issues is they have issues on their property and personally on their, with their pipes, the, the city has nothing to do.
People on Meadowbrook as well.
Uh, that's what I'm talking about.
Close to myself.
I mean, if they have cross connections on their side of the line, yes, they have to take care of that first. That's not, that's not a city issue. We, we take care of the flow when it comes to us. But if their pipes are crossed on their property, there's a couple of people on the safer board. And we do have others, I don't know the cities you're talking about, if it's on their property, we can't really use.
As there's, there's a body of case law and, and we talked about my school neighbors that indicates that, and you're talking about repairs that are on the individual's property. It's not permissible to, you don't have taxpayer dollars for those individual repairs. So there were steps we could take that related to the benefit of all the owners that they, if they are all committed to making their own repairs. And that's where there was some um, I think desire to take a step back and those individual owners to think about it.
I just, I just remember the council meetings and remember why it was found that that was taken care of.
Well, we did need, I mean, we're, we're happy to help them out on our side. It's just issues on their side. They can't do it. It's tax dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? I'm sorry, did I ask for questions?
Mr. Blackett.
Oh, yeah, okay. All right. Is there, is there a motion to approve this order on emergency? So, motion by Mr. Kane, is that a second?
Second.
A second by Mrs. Sacks. Any discussion on the motion? We'll take two votes versus on a suspension of rules. Mrs. Thomas.
Mrs. Sacks, hi, Mrs. Whitefield, hi, Mrs. Wise, hi, Mr. Tony.
Hi.
Mr. Kane.
Hi.
Now I'm making a motion.
Mrs. Sacks, hi, Mrs. Whitefield, hi, Mrs. Wise, hi, Mr. Tony.
Hi.
Mr. Kane.
Hi.
Very good motion carriers. Next is item D, motion to request authorization to bid the emergency sewer repairs in twenty twenty three to twenty twenty six is pouring. Thank you, everybody in the council. This is a request that we need to bid for emergency repair services for repairing sewers. Sanitary and storm sewers the city maintains within city public properties and right ways. Excuse me. Whenever a repair comes up, it is required, it's outside of scope, something the service department can do. This emergency repair contract kicks in and we utilize the contractor involved in that to do the repair. This is a three year contract. The previous contract was three years. We're recommending that we did it again for three years. Current contract will expire on January first of this year. So we need to move along pretty rapidly to get this out in and back to council for approval. The contract is bid with unit prices. So we'll put so many linear beam of eight inch pipe, so many of the neutral theater twenty four to thirty six inch pipe. We have quantities for pavement repairs, for driveways and sidewalk repairs, whatever might come up in this, this type of repair. Recommending that we get, get this out bid and then I'll bring you back the results of that bid and we'll have a discussion about awarding it to whoever is still there. I estimate the cost for this contract to be about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars annually. And there is funds available in the sewer and water maintenance fund. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Corning. Any questions for Mr. Corning? And is there a motion?
So.
Motion by Mrs. Weiss to request authorization to emergency sewer repairs in twenty twenty three, twenty twenty six. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Sacks. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, this is Thomas McCall.
Mrs. Sacks, hi, Mrs. Whitefield, hi, Mrs. Wise, and Mr. Cody.
Hi.
Mr. Kane.
Hi.
Very good motion carriers. Next to item B, motion to request authorization to bid the twenty twenty three to twenty twenty six catch basin inlet sewer cleaning and co-division inspection program is reported. This contract is similar to the sewer maintenance contract we're meeting repairs. This contract is for cleaning, televising, inspecting and cleaning out catch bases. We do approximately three hundred and seventy catch bases a year. We have a three year cycle to do all catch bases within the city. We have a five year cycle of doing all the sewer, it's actually a four year cycle of all the sewers to be cleaned, televised and inspected. Our current contract will expire around January first, similar to the last one. And I estimate that we're going to spend about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars annually to do this work. And again, funds will be coming at the sewer maintenance fund. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Corning. Any questions for Mr. Corning? Now, is there a motion to, to authorize?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Whitefield is her second. Second, and a second by Mr. Kane. All right, Mr. Kane, Mr. Kane. Is there any discussion? This is Thomas McCall.
Mrs. Sacks, hi, Mrs. Whitefield, hi, Mrs. Wise, hi, Mr. Tony.
Hi.
Mr. Kane.
Hi.
Very good motion carriers. Next is item F, motion to accept the Van Kuren Services Inc. as the lowest investment twenty twenty two. One fall tree removal program and entering into contract with the same amount down to a seat, a hundred five thousand seven hundred eighty five dollars. Mr. Corning. This is our annual tree removal program of twenty twenty two dash one this year. We opened bids on Friday, October seventh, and then I provided you with the results. There were two bidders. Our stream was at a hundred and twenty nine thousand nine hundred and Van Kuren Services was at a hundred and five thousand seven hundred eighty five. Van Kuren Services has done this contract in the past. In fact, they had the previous year. And they, they were acceptable and it's worked out well from the files. I'm recommending that we award the contract Van Kuren Services in the amount of one hundred and five thousand seven hundred eighty five thousand. And I provided you a list of the trees that we're doing at the address, what we've done with each. Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Corning. Are there any questions for Mr. Corning? Mrs. Sacks.
Thank you. What is the cycle again? Could you remind us?
The city is divided into four sections and we do one section each year. So it's a four year cycle to get around the city.
And this is for permitting and or removal. I guess it was brought up in a prior meeting about Warrensville, was it? So when trees are removed, that particular area isn't necessarily put on the list to have those trees replaced. They do wait their turn within the cycle of tons of water.
That, that is true. Something like Warrensville or Cedar or Green Road would be a special project that we have not done. They don't generally ask for trees and we have not forced them to accept trees. So whereas Warrensville is not part of the project and this particular quadrant would include Warrensville Pro.
I saw that.
But like Hills Brook to, to Warrensville. He's west side, excuse me. But there, there are no trees on Warrensville being planted this year that I know.
Thank you.
There may be some that are being proven, but I don't recall what else.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sacks. Any other questions, Mr. Kane?
Thank you, Mayor. I was looking at the, the contract from last year. And there were forty four trees on it. This one has one hundred and seventy. The price per unit was a lot better, looking better than that contract before. Thirty some thousand dollars. What, what's, could you explain the difference in the number of trees?
Yeah, last year, last year, we were instructed during the finance process to try to scale back to use the dollars within these funds. And the true rebound was specifically one of those that was called out. So we did scale that back. But for example, in two thousand and twenty, a year prior, we did six hundred and twenty seven trees in Van Kuren. We had forty five of them removed. Twenty twenty one, I had a number of forty seven trees we did. Council had added a couple of trees at the time we were, were working the contract. Or some specific issues that were going on, fourteen of forty seven removed. And this year we have four hundred and seventy three trees and one hundred and thirteen of them are removed. Uh, the removals are some of the large silver maples and other trees like that. The cost goes up. And would you look at taking down someone in large? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Very good. Mrs. Wise.
Mr. Kennedy, we're within our expenditures um, in our shade tree lot of this, correct?
Yes, and there is a balance, bond balance, regardless.
Great, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Wise. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any other question? Now, is there a motion to accept the bid?
So.
Okay, motion to accept the bid by Mrs. Wise, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Sacks. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we go on.
Mrs. Sacks, hi. Mrs. Blendo, hi. Mrs. Wise, hi. Mr. Tony.
Hi.
Mr. Kane.
Hi. Very good motion carriers. Next is a motion of separate bid from aside of the motion of separate bid from Johnson Landscaping Inc. as the lowest investment twenty two dash two. While tree planting program and the entering to contract with the same amount down to a seat seventeen thousand five hundred twenty dollars. Mr. Corning. Uh, yeah, this bid was open on Friday, October seventh. It's for planting trees this fall. Uh, generally requires that they will be in the ground before uh, Christmas time, December fifteenth, I think is the actual date. Uh, then we received two bids, one from Park Street at East Lake, twenty seven thousand three hundred and thirty seven dollars. And one from Johnson's Landscaping of Mena at seventeen thousand five hundred and twenty. Johnson's has performed uh, tree project, tree planting projects in the past here and has performed uh, acceptably. And I'm recommending that we award the uh, the bid to Johnson's Landscaping seventeen thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. Uh, funds will be coming out of shade tree maintenance fund and we'll be planting forty eight trees. Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Corning. Are there any questions for Mr. Corning?
Well, I I just want to make a comment. I I know that, you know, at this juncture, we are removing more trees than we are planting. We also have. Nample on the shade tree fund. So one of the things that I'm discussing with Mr. Corning, looking into the new years is. It's an advantage in the fact that we do have good money in the fund and. And next year could be a year where we perhaps gain some ground on some tree planting. And most of us here would support that idea. Well, with respect to Warrensville, Mrs. Sacks, I know that Mr. Chiny will probably be relating to his report or I know it's very soon about. The selection by the WAC of parts of the center road to be done this fiscal year twenty twenty five, if if there is uh. Something that we want to do with the bare of the trees in Warrensville Center Road, I would suggest sometime a dollar design page that we. Look at that with perspective. There's some sort of feature we want to make on Warrensville Center Road regarding trees. But that's not necessarily part of this discussion, which is not an opportunity to to bring up where we would be going.
Very good. Is there a motion to accept this bid?
Awesome.
And motion by Mrs. Blendo, is there a second? Second, second by Mr. Kane. Any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, we go on.
Mrs. Sacks, hi. Mrs. Blendo, hi. Mrs. Wise, hi. Mr. Tony.
Hi.
Mr. Kane.
Um, very good motion carriers. Thank you, thank you. Right of nature is a motion at our executive session for the purpose of discussing legal proceedings, personnel, and real estate matters. We had executive sessions that came before prior to this meeting and we've covered all the items that. Didn't bring up in the state in executive session. So. Moving along, we now go to reports and communications from various various departments and we'll start with finance.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, so Mary indicated working on, we're now finishing up. The budget proposal that we could get once one either on day or before that. Um, Mary indicated it's balanced budget that is taking into consideration. The amount of money that we are collecting in each bond and the amount of money we're proposing to spend and those two should be within balance. We're not using um, anyway, any substantial amounts of monies that have accumulated. So all our fund balances as of right now. Today, we have five point eight million dollars in the general bond. We have nine point four million dollars total with all bonds. Um, that should all be available next year because we're just going to spend a moment again. So I'll have that out uh, with a list of what's in the budget and some of the items the mayor mentioned, what budget is not included. And any assumptions we made in terms of pricing and labor and that's so. Look forward to getting that to you on Monday. Also, the process of looking over this year's budget and maybe some recalibrations for presentation to council. Either in November or at some point prior to the end of the year, is to make sure that every public preparations are set and balanced. That's required from the auditor. I'm so looking forward to getting that to you. Also, a couple of items to um, be aware of, working out a proposal to get a new phone system. And that should be known and forward to council sometime. Um, probably the next meeting, the first meeting in November. And that's to um, alleviate some of the problems, systemic problems we had with phones and internet by our current provider. And also give you our phones that we're dealing with right now. They're certain nineteen ninety five, so it'll be a welcome experience, I think, for everybody throughout the city. Also, we'll look forward to bringing you the extension of our current banking agreement with dollar bank. Uh, that contract is set to expire, but they uh, read to some fee reductions, which I think. Um, would more than offset any kind of results from the get back to the council comprehensive bid this year. So we'll look to get you those details at that next, at first meeting. As I said, we have um, current any balance day after conferences, the general bond, five point eight eight million dollars. That includes one half million dollars of conferences, so our unexpendable balance right now is seven point four million dollars. It's in the general bond. Unexpendable balance for all bonds, twelve point one million. We have two point seven million dollars of the conferences. So we have nine point four million dollars available as any balance. And it's already in two four.
Good, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kane. Any questions for Mr. Kane? Mr. Kane?
Uh, yes, the I T R P included. Included. On the poll there and requesting for for phone system.
It does, it does. Um, we were, we were uh, working with a uh. Internet provider with respect to changing over our internet. They made this proposal. Uh, we looked at it and 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 even though this is in the R F B, we will have a meeting coming up. Or if we were to look like, I think, to go with the, with this alternative, we can simply advise that, you know, with this matter of bidding sheet. That you do not have it on this item.
Right.
We will already cover it. Mrs. Blendo.
So if we were to go with a new system, this would obviously be one that is. Uh, expandable for any municipal center. You wouldn't have to be doing double the work and double the payment, right?
Right. This is this is something where we wouldn't even only equip, it would be uh, it would be modular and expandable and transferable. And 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 upgraded from time to time by the provider. So we don't get a lot of nineteen ninety five technology and sell off too. For some of ours, Mr. Kane, uh. The, would this include a first par pool as well? And we would, we would be intended to have a representative of the provider here at that meeting. To go over there. Any other questions? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. McCondon, no report there. And public safety, please. Chief Brown. Current worker, no report, public safety, fire. Chief Brown.
Thanks, Eric. Good evening, council. Just one item to report. Um, as you know, we had our open house on October ninth. And just wanted to thank the community for coming out and the administration and the other departments that work with us, as well as council. Uh, for your support or else to uh, host those type of activities. A lot of positive feedback, both from firefighters and.
Thank you, Chief. Anything else? Okay, very good. Thank you. Any questions for Chief Brown? And seeing that, we move on to service. Mr. Corning. Thank you, Mayor Council. Only two items to report on tonight. First is leaf collection that has started new sleep collection curbside of the vacuum equipment. Uh, we will continue to go around the city until approximately December fifteenth. So get your leaves ready for the curb and uh, we'll be there to pick them up. Um, and then services will provide additional labor starting the thirty first of this month. And that will continue through to the end of uh, to the middle of December, when we add our leave program. That's item number one. Uh, second item was something I had reported to the mayor a little earlier. One of our rubbish trucks has broken and can no longer be repaired economically. So. We have it up at our Kerwin yard. It is number twenty one three. It is a two thousand and four vehicle. It was on the schedule for replacement this year. But uh, we have not even replaced the vehicle that we were planning on replacing last year. Which is a two thousand version of the same type of truck, a Mack low entry. Uh, cap. So twenty one seven was going to be on the proposal to get replaced. Uh, however, you know, we've been having a long discussion about automating, what we're going to buy, whether we should buy a another rear load truck or what we're going to do. So the twenty one seven is a two thousand truck that was previously used in New York. We purchased it in two thousand and thirteen. It's twenty two years old. It has its share of problems. This past week, that truck also went there. So then we had two rubbish trucks there. We were able to take some of the parts off the one up at the yard, which is no longer being used. We were able to pick up additional parts from the junkyard. So again, twenty one seven, the two thousand, the two thousand truck. Running again. So that's what we're using right now. The two thousand and four truck is still up at the yard and it's not really going to be able to be repaired economically, but either engine rebuild. We've taken the hydraulics off of that and sweet arms, sweet arms to use on another truck. So. Uh, that truck is is out of service. I believe uh, in my discussions, um, quickest and simplest thing would be to purchase another used truck. It's not my ideal, but if we're going to continue doing rear load packing. And I need to get a truck in a short period of time. Uh, purchasing another used truck will get us through some years. These trucks, as I indicated, uh, were purchased in two thousand thirteen and two thousand fifteen. So we've gotten, you know, five to seven years out of them. Um, I suppose that maybe we can do that again and get another five to seven years out of a used truck. So I. My current plan would be to come back to council for the proposal to purchase a used truck and I'll try to provide that by the next year. Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Corning. Are there any questions, Mr. Kane? Mr. Kane?
Um, thank you. The uh, the the used truck that was bought was in New York. Why did the, do you know why the truck didn't be available when I was sold?
They uh, they have a regular rotation of trucks in New York City that they purchase new trucks every year and retire a part of their fleet every year. Mrs. Watson.
Yeah, just um, remind, just aside with the capital repair stretching in front of me, you mentioned we were supposed to purchase one in this fiscal year, but we did not.
We had, we did not purchase one this fiscal year. We had talked about it and again, the the question was still on the table. Are we going automated, including rear load pack? Rear load pack is going to cost you about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars and automated one's going to cost you about three hundred and thirty.
Was it in a budget that was here? I just don't recall.
There um, was money in there for a lease, similar to what we did in the last peruse truck purchase. So it was about seventy one thousand dollars here at the airport on. It's available for lease purchase.
Well, there's one last thing, sorry. When you come to us and you haven't used the under new variable?
I could. Both rear load backers got a lot of that.
I mean, I guess, I guess at this point, both rear load backers, but also the lease. So it will be new, he was, he's first.
I mean, while it remains undetermined, you know, what we're doing, knowing the long term, it's still a fair approach, sure.
And the only, the only issue with the, with the new is that we're looking at probably eight months to a year before we can get it.
And I take it you would, we would want a replacement vehicle, like.
Um, yes, the the second truck I was mentioning, which is the oldest of the fleet, the two thousand truck goes down. We're going to have a very difficult time finding cars for it and repairing it any further. Like I said, we had to go to a junkyard down in Canton to get the steering pump that it needed.
In my, my suggestion, we would simply explore the used replacement system. But this is my, the, uh, if you want them to go the other way, I suppose we could still do that.
I mean, we need one right now. So we don't have a choice with that. But I think it would be nice just to see what we, the only one that costs just thirty years.
Okay, okay. All right. That's my report.
Actually.
Sure.
Um, are the drives for that overhead going to A R V tomorrow?
Uh, I do not believe so. Uh, the contractor, I talked to him today. He said it is architecting, amount, taking pictures, measurements. And was preparing the renderings. He indicated that he would have the renderings and the sample materials to me next week, no later than Wednesday. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Corning. Uh, next is housing, excuse me, housing and community development. Mr. Engelbrand. Right, I have a report. Hey, thank you, sir. City engineer, Mr. Chuni.
Sorry, I still have thunder there. Yes, thank you, Mary. I had two things to report on tonight, but you reminded me of the third, so I'll spread out a little bit. Last Thursday, uh, WAC informed us that they awarded us two projects. It was voted on at their programming and planning committee meeting on Friday morning. Uh, it now has to go to the full board in December and we'll be getting contracts and scope meeting December. We had probably in January of next year. Uh, the first project is the one the mayor mentioned in his report is the Washington Boulevard, uh, all purpose path uh, in inverse units in Cleveland Heights. And that was one point six million dollars. They awarded for that in fiscal year twenty twenty five. Um, in fiscal year twenty twenty five, actually starts July first of twenty twenty four, we want to move up the bracket. Uh, because that's the state fiscal year, June, July first to June thirtieth. So it's on, it's on the state fiscal year. Um, and I don't know, they, they, there's usually eighty two kilograms. I wasn't very um, not familiar with what this one is. I'm sure it is. So it's some twenty percent are shared by the real nice, you should kind of think. Uh, the other one is they have awarded three million dollars for Warrensville Center Road resurfacing uh, from uh, Cedar to Fairmont. And that is in twenty twenty four, uh, twenty five. See, I, oh, wait, no, I got it. I want the emergency, I might say that was twenty six, yeah, the words was twenty five. Again, that's probably an eighty twenty, uh, until it gets past the full board and we see contracts and agreements, but uh, we won't have all those numbers to put that back. The other two items I had to report on is the Cedar Road construction. Uh, all the paving is done on Cedar Road. This will be over that job. Uh, we're waiting on a little bit of sidewalk. That'll be finished this week. They couldn't do it in this weather. Uh, they've been finishing it up tomorrow and Friday. Uh, and then they're waiting on. And then they're waiting on a striker, the striking contractor, subcontractors behind. That's why you're still getting barrels out there, the cones and things on the, on the west side of town. Once it gets striped, then it'll be basically ninety-five, ninety-six percent done. Once it gets striped, we'll do a final walk there and then final flushes. But the good thing is that the paving's done and the weather turns sour and the paving. So again, that will be closed out by, it takes several months to go by their jobs. We'll find out when our final sharers are doing audit of what the, I think, they do an audit at the end of the job. We have put one in upfront, but have to do all the final quantities. I'm not aware of any change orders. And I don't know if they use all the quantities that were in there. So we may get some money back, but until they do their own.
Yeah, I, I do know from, from just my own viewing of the area at all, it's my view of Mr. Kennedy, we're already at the signs that there were some some sidewalk on the west end of Cedar Road project where additional blocks may be necessary in order to ensure a passage for somebody who has mobility that they're going to be able to get around certain.
We could add that to the end of it. We do our walk-through. Cotton can be done in cold weather as you know, the surface is asphalt and you just have to eat the water and add or give it length on it, but the, you know, concrete we can still do.
Okay. I think that's going to be called for here, so keep an eye on it. The Washington, I know the Washington Cedar intersection. Where the owners are.
And they, that's when they did finish, actually has, you talked about earlier, the service rates, the big tunnel shafts, you know, for the community. They have a big one right, right in the middle of that and they have to raise that to grade and adjust it. The contractor was a lot of touch. But that's what's delayed that. That would have been done already, but then we're not sure to kind of their own contractor to come up with. I was, I'm going to assure that it's going to be done this week. And I would, I would suspect the striking will be done by the end. It's just the guys. The other project is a two thousand and twenty-two road improvement program that we had here. All three streets are paved. We ended up with additional monies because we did do as much curb work. We ended up adding Washington from Cedar to Stockton, that little piece, it's about eight hundred feet. And we were able to squeeze that in under the budget. The remaining to do, it's going to happen even tomorrow or Friday, again, weather dependent. We're doing patching on Green Road, a crack ceiling on Green Road, our half of Green, it's half of it's in Beechwood. That's what's scheduled to start tomorrow at ten o'clock. We've notified the businesses about their irons and the other stores. I'm, I'm not aware. It's not canceled, but I don't know what this one is going to do, so hopefully that'll get done. That, that doesn't get done tomorrow, we get done Friday. And then that contractor will be more.
That's, and very good. Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Any questions, Mr. Chuni? All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Chuni. We turn now to communications and civic engagement. Mr. Cook, this excuse from this meeting. But I would like to announce that Wednesday, November sixteenth, is the civic awards. There'll be at John McGurley University in the Jardine Room. There will be a reception at six thirty out of a cookie and lunch tight reception, followed by the awards presentation itself at seven thirty P M. It's only Wednesday, November sixteenth. Thank you. Next then is, Mr. Stone, Mr. Strucker.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a report. I just wanted to say thank you to the council and Blingo for giving me the time to respond on me today. Second time I've done that, so I appreciate it. And I want to thank the rest of the council for making your, being so accommodating and making yourselves available at such an early time this evening and thinking of the great questions and then what subjects that would satisfy.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Strucker. And thank you. We turn now to the reports of standing committees taking action there on building housing, Mrs. Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. The building and housing committee will be again in November on the first, when we determine. And I've been working with our director on the topics that have been being explained.
Very good. Thank you. Community, I wish. Thank you, Mr. King. I'm developing. Mr. Rock, it's not here. Is there a report? Seeing none, finance, Mrs. Watson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, there's a finance meeting on November second where the directors will be warned. There wants to needs and there is also a follow-up on November.
Very good. Thank you. Recreation, you can know or remember. Thank you. Safety, Mr. Cool, who's not present, is there anything to be reported? Seeing none, we don't report. Service utilities and Sacks.
No report.
Thank you. We all, Mrs. Watson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have one confirmed service department tour on November fourteenth. And we are in the midst of scheduling a second one that will lead our tours of facilities and then we will begin process of grand sizing spaces and hopefully looking forward.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Watson. Are there any reports of special committees taking action there on? Seeing none. Is there any unfinished or miscellaneous business? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Awesome.
Motion by Mrs. Blingo, is there? Second, second by Mr. King. Mrs. Thomas, we call.
This is Seth. Hi, this is Blingo. Hi, this is Wise. Hi, Mr. Kennedy?
Hi.
Mr. King?
Hi. Good, very good. Motion carries. Our next round of meetings, Monday, November seventh, seven P M. Very good.